And we also welcome him to give the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the opportunity. About four months here. I love this community, so I know you're doing good work in here. It's a beautiful place and it's a great place to live. I'm gonna say the Lord be with you and I hope you're gonna greet me back and say, and also with you. The Lord be with you. Thank you, let's pray. Almighty God, Heavenly Father, Creator, Redeemer, Spirit of Life, we thank you that we can come before you and raise our arms and say, you give us blessings and we appreciate what you do for us. God, be with us here in this town. Be here as the town conducts business. Be with our leaders and give them clarity and wisdom in their decisions. Help them make decisions that are good for all. Be with us, bless our community and help us to be fruitful in all that we do. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, October 21st, 2024, and I will call this meeting the Fergus Falls City Council to order. And before we do roll call, I just want to say, um, just make a quick point that, um, there's not gonna be any campaign or political conversations tonight that goes for everyone in the room, myself included, all the council members, the public, the city staff, um, feel very strongly that that is against the law. This is a publicly funded meeting. So hopefully, we don't have to go down that road, but I'm just gonna let people know, if they go down talking about campaign issues, we're gonna be shutting that off. And I'm gonna be an equal opportunity interrupter for anyone on that. That's not appropriate at this meeting. So with that, roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Uh, first item of business this evening is approval of the agenda and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Oh, sorry, open forum, my fault. Open forum. At this time, floor is open. Anyone wishing to speak to any issues that are not on the agenda, please feel to, uh, feel free. Not on the agenda, correct?
After.
After, during that, during that conversation, after the council's discussion, I'm gonna try to open up the floor.
Hello, my name is Dwayne Cookman. I live at 543 West Stanton, uh, Mayor, Councilpeople. Thank you. Um, I didn't see on the agenda, uh, I'd like to know, update on the golf course, where that's at? Um, any updates on the old dairy plant? And I see 801 is, is on here. And the ethics of last week, that discussion.
Thank you, Dwayne. And we can ask that the, um, can we ask staff to bring an update to either committee or the whole or the next council meeting on the golf course? Uh, 80, uh, not 80, the golf course, the, um,
Dairy.
Dairy property and if there is anything on the ethics that's not in our... Thank you, thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else?
Bob Noah, Fergus Falls. Uh, I wanted to talk about, um, I have a little trouble understanding, Mr. Mayor, how it is that you're advocating for the West Central Initiative while you've been a consultant for, I don't know how long. And, and I read in the paper how you're going to be accepting a position, I don't know if you created it or consulted to create it or, the directors of the West Central Initiative had, um, created the position as director. Um, how is it that your position as mayor, you're advocating for West Central Initiative? And, uh, you'll be working in a position for them at the same time? My question is, isn't it a conflict of interest and especially given, um, your further aspirations? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I can just react to that briefly. I think the city attorney has weighed in on that because, uh, council member Hicks heard from someone had similar questions. City attorney dismissed that really quickly. Just a couple of comments to that. I think everyone up here that I'm aware of has jobs, right? Like this is a very, very part-time job. Everyone has jobs, whether it's at Otter Tail Power or privately owned businesses or self-employed. Um, second of all, you accuse me of a conflict of interest, which is against the law. I take that very serious and...
Okay, if you wanna talk about it, I will.
And I would just say, I'll give you an example. I take an oath to this position to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Minnesota. During COVID, my business was the only locally owned business in the city of Fergus Falls to not be eligible for local COVID relief dollars because of any perceived or real conflicts of interest. So I know what a conflict of interest is and I've always recused myself when there's any conflict between myself, my business, or my employment. So as far as I'm concerned, I think you've addressed this, city attorney. And if you want, if you want to file a complaint, you're happy to do that. There's multiple challenges you can, you, you, multiple challenges, channels that you can do that. But to come up here and accuse me of breaking the law, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, no, we're not gonna entertain, that's not, that's not what this form is for.
Well, first of all, you don't decide what the form is for. The Constitution of the United States does, the First Amendment. That's the first, first one. Secondly, I didn't accuse you, I asked the question, isn't that a conflict of interest? You can find it on YouTube later if you want to, but that's the question that I asked.
And I said, no.
I could, I could bring up probably eight different points about your ethics, lack of ethics, your code of conduct, the violation of code of conduct.
How about we don't? How about we just get on with the city's business?
Why don't you be quiet while I...
All right, all right, all right, we're done, we're done. We're moving on with this. Thank you, Mr. Noah.
That's what I thought.
Thank you, Mr. Noah. Anyone else wish to address the council on any business that's not on the agenda this evening? Okay. See, no one will move along. Next item is the approval of the agenda and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Brumseth. Good evening, Andrew.
Good evening, Your Honor. Members, thank you. Uh, we do have a few items on the consent agenda that have been asked to be removed. Uh, the first one being number one, council member Creymeyer has requested that be pulled. And then, uh, council member Hicks has asked that number five be pulled for some discussion. Beyond that, uh, no changes to the agenda that I'm aware of.
Oh, yeah. I, uh, thank you, because I wanna, I wanna pull that number five as well. So, thank you. Um...
I'll make the motion.
With that, thank you.
For the agenda.
Anthony, someone like the second?
Second.
Second, Al, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Two public hearings this evening. First is for Public Improvement 5373, Shoreview Drive, Pebble Lake Road to the east termini at the cul-de-sac Batumis Improvement Project. We'll call on our city engineer, Brian Yubaro. Good evening, Brian.
Thank you, Your Honor, and good evening, Your Honor and council members. Uh, yes, this, I'm gonna be requesting you open up the public hearing. Uh, this is the final cost hearing for Public Improvement 5373. This is Batumis Street Improvement, Shoreview Drive, uh, from Pebble, Pebble Lake Road to the east termini. Uh, just wanted to give you a little quick background prior to opening up the public hearing. Uh, I am gonna be requesting a resolution adopting the final assessment rules for PI 5373 contingent upon awarding the construction contract to Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving, which is the next, uh, item to discuss. Uh, but yes, just give you a little background, this is a rural paving job of Shoreview Drive, that's Presley Gravel. This is Shoreview Drive, Pebble Lake Road to the northeast termini, which is the cul-de-sac. I mean, today will be the hearing date, October 21st, 2024. Uh, the assessment rules and legal publication have been sent to all benefiting properties. I just want to note to date, I have not received any written objections. I have received a phone call for a possible senior citizen deferral. Uh, finance is working with that individual to see if they qualify. They reside at 1793, but other than that, I have not received any objections. So, like I mentioned, assessment rules have been out, the first installment due date of June 30th, 2025, uh, interest rate of 5.7% and assessment term of 15 years. Um, the assessment rates for Batumis Street they're proposing is $10,830 per unit. Uh, and then also a second rate to Batumis Drive for aprons at $40 a square foot. So I got it in order up there, we have a total project cost of $267,475. Financing, we're gonna be issuing, requesting issuing PIR 429 bonds. Of that, $216,940 is proposed to be active. Uh, we do have some city share as well, the amount of 7,215, and also from the preliminary hearing, we're also requesting to defer, uh, four lots for a Moline property as well. So that amount includes $42,320. So as you can see of the total project cost, we have a total funding proposed of $267,475. So at this time, I'll be requesting open a public, public, final cost hearing for Public Improvement 5373. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And we will open that public hearing at this time. If anyone wishes to speak to Public Improvement 5373, please.
Your Honor, um, I just have, if this is a question that we need to go on so quickly, previous to that, um, might understand that we took, we removed item number five from the, um, item from the consent agenda.
That means, means we're gonna discuss it. So it's not on the consent. It's, it will be discussed individually.
Yeah, it'll still come up in this.
It will, yeah. So at this time, the public hearing for Public Improvement 5373, Shoreview Drive is open. Anyone wishing to speak to that?
Hello, I'm Bruce Money. Uh, I live at 1822 Shoreview Drive, and my wife and I are in favor of this resolution. The one concern that we have is making sure that the construction that's being done right now is finalized before you start on this project. I mean, from our perspective, we were told that it would take about two weeks to get that sewer and water line put in, and it's been over three months. And we, we don't know what exactly is going on, but I think it'd be a disaster if that is not finished before you start this project. Because you'd have to go back and redo everything. So we just know the timeline and we don't want this project to start before that is finalized and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Money. Any, any comment?
Yeah, yes, Your Honor, you answer that. It'll be in the next memo, but I, I put in there to get the favorable bid pricing, I requested a working day contract with substantial of next summer.
Okay.
Uh, so yes, I anticipate having this other project buttoned up, stabilized before we start the actual road project.
Thank you.
Hello, Dwayne Cookman, 543 West Stanton. Um, in the Stanton project, is there any other thing that has to open up that road? Because you, we laid a beautiful, uh, road down and we opened up a couple of different spots for access. And I'm wondering, can we make sure the road, everything underneath it is finished before we lay the asphalt down?
On Stanton now?
On Stanton, on, no, on his, on this other one, but on Stanton, they opened back up again.
Sure, I see. I thank, thank you, Dwayne. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? See, no one will close the public hearings. Back to the council, we'll be looking for a resolution adopting the final cost assessment. Roles for Public Improvement 5373 contingent upon awarding the construction contract to Mark Lee Asphalt and Paving.
I'll opt for that.
Thank you. Jim? Tom, thank you. Scott?
Uh, just a comment to make. I had had a conversation with Brian as to the details of this project and often in town, any street would have curb and gutter because there's storms who are underground and all that. Out in this area, there is no, uh, need for curb and gutter and there's no storm, it's ditches. And so as people go and see this after it's done, if there's any curiosity about it, that would be the answer to that question is because this is an area that's developed with ditches, there was no requirement for curb and gutter. And if the people in this area wanted it and wanted to pay for it, they could have petitioned it that way, but it wasn't requested that way and it wasn't engineered that way. Did I say that right, Brian? I think that's right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I think, I think you're gonna just, could we, could we answer Mr. Cookman's question? I think, you know, um, Mr. Cookman was kind of asking that obviously Stanton got dug up post, so was, was, what was the, was, you know, the reason for that was? And how do we make sure that this new road doesn't end up with the same scenario where it got dug up again after he got the initial lay?
Yes, it's, it's part of the performance specification, so upon 30 days, generally, uh, we require mandrel testing or televising of the sanitary sewer once we get consolidation or anything. Yes, we did find something with the pipes that there was a rupture unidentified and whose responsibility, other than we had to get it repaired.
Yeah, so it wasn't that we, we didn't do something in sequence.
No, there's service or anything, no, no, it's, it came through a televising and I can share that too as well, where you can see an actual rupture in the pipe, so.
You know, and on that same note, I was on Summit today on the 500 block of Summit and they had some bubbling up of the asphalt. Is that a similar situation? Is it something that, do we have an inspection for the underlayment before they put the first, I'm assuming that the city?
Same protocol. Um, yes, we require televising. I do have those from the contractor, we gotta review them. Hence why we don't put the wearing on, the final lift of wearing till the following year. It's not only for that, you can do all the compaction testing you want, it's just a better assurance that through a freeze thaw cycle or pipeline deficiencies, everything, that we can get those all repaired before we put the final lift of wearing on, so.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Fish? Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Creymeyer?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
A resolution is approved. Uh, item number two is resolution awarding the construction services contract to Mark Lee and Asphalt Paving in the amount of $194,493. And again, Brian Yubaro.
Thank you. Yes, uh, we opened bids on this project Thursday, September 5th at 2:00 PM in these chambers. Uh, the apparent low bidder was Mark Lee Asphalt Paving with a total base bid amount of $194,493. The engineer's opinion of probable cost was $214,000. We evaluated the bids, conducted a post-bid interview and determined Mark Lee Asphalt's paving's bid price to be in order and responsive. Uh, these numbers were also included into the final assessment price, uh, cost too as well for, uh, the previous memo we just had. So, given this, I recommend this contract be awarded. I just noted it, but like I said, mentioned previously, uh, we have a working day contract with substantial completion at late summer 2025. It seemed to work out very favorably in our order, so I anticipate this work actually starting next summer given the time of year, but I can give an update as that progresses. So at this time, I'm requesting a resolution rewarding the construction services contract to Mark Lee Asphalt and paving in the amount of $194,493.
Thank you, Brian, and we can...
I'll make that, you're on.
Anthony? Scott, questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Brian. That resolution is approved. There are no bids to warrant this evening and there are no items for us to consider under petitions and communications. There are three items remaining from the consent agenda. Um, we would look for a, we, so we've removed items number one and five. I would look for a resolution approving the remaining three items. Thank you, Scott, thank you, Al. Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
That resolution is approved. Item number one is a motion approving the minutes of October 7th, 2024, city council meeting. And I believe council member Creymeyer had a question or a comment on that?
Just one thing I would like to see, it would be on the sixth line down. Um, it said council seat due to his unethical conduct. I'd like to have, I use the word habitual a couple of times. I'd like that to be in there on record. And then also on the second to the last line, uh, Job said that the code of conduct is pri, states private encounters, which that's page, top of page five in the code of conduct. If we could just list page five, code of conduct. So it's easier to find. That's it?
So is there a motion to approve those with, with those additions, council member Creymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Make them.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank, thank you, Scott. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Item number five is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant to West Central Initiative for a project manager. You have a question?
Yep, I had a question, Your Honor. Um, my, my, uh, ob, obviously it's $20,000 grant and I'm not against the grant. I just wanted clarification on exactly what the goal of, of this grant was be, um, obviously $20,000 doesn't necessarily buy a lot of consultancy time. Uh, so, you know, and, you know, how is this gonna fit in, you know, obviously between West Central Initiative and Otter Tail County, they both have full-time people working on childcare. And I don't want us to duplicate what they're doing, you know, it should be enhancing what they're doing. And I wanna make sure that's what we're getting for our $20,000, or for their $20,000.
Sure. Thank you, Anthony. And I was gonna pull that just for the simple fact to make clear that I've had, I'll let Claire answer this question, but I have no conversations about this. I have no, uh, I have no, I haven't been involved in any conversations. So Claire, will you please answer the question?
Yeah.
And I'm not going to be involved in any decision.
Yeah, um, West Central Initiative serves a large region, I think it's nine counties, um, so they, and they are down to only one member of staff doing childcare work, uh, Marsha Erickson, uh, Nancy Jost retired. So their capacity is limited. Um, Otter Tail County also does have, um, part-time people doing work on childcare projects, but one of those people took another position. So they're also down to one person, so their capacity is also limited. Plus, they're focusing on the entire county. So the idea of this grant would be to have someone focus specifically on projects happening in Fergus Falls. Um, we have two projects right now that could stand to have some, um, dedicated, dedicated attention from somebody who has an actual background in childcare and early childhood education. Um, so that's why we're making the request.
Thank you. Then I'll make the motion.
Resolution, I'd like to second, second. Is this the item that you wanted to, did you have a question on that or a comment?
Pam Ballard, Fergus Falls. I am against any money going to West Central Initiative because of its globalist agenda. The president, CEO, lead, that leads, um...
This isn't coming from, this isn't...
It's coming from West Central Initiative to the city. Well, I don't want, okay, I don't want West Central Initiative basically even involved in the city. I think they have a globalist agenda. They state that their, um, president, their efforts to impact global change by focusing on, uh, United Nations Sustainable Development Goals. The United Nations Sustainable, Sustainable Development Goals is the 2030 agenda. Their, one of their big, biggest funders is the McKnight Foundation, which is globalist. They, um, I mean, if you just look up any information, you just follow it along. I think West Central Initiative is bad for the area. And if we wanna find someone for funding and to help different organizations, I think we can find it elsewhere. But I really do not think we should take any part in West Central Initiative because I do not believe in their agenda. It goes against...
Thanks, Pam.
Everything.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. We have a resolution on the floor. Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Creymeyer?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes. Yes.
A resolution is approved. Under ordinance resolutions tonight, we have a resolution considering approval for the petition of membership to the Charter Commission and...
Andrew, you're gonna?
Sarah Duffy's.
Sarah Duffy's with us this evening, so we will welcome her from the Charter Commission. Good evening, Sarah.
Good evening, Your Honor and council members, uh, and staff. My name is Sarah Duffy and I am the chair of the Charter Commission. And I'm here to just give you a quick update before, uh, your consideration of the pending resolution. So the Charter Commission, we had our annual meeting in September and there were seven members that were, our terms were to expire, um, at the end of 2024. All seven members agreed to extend their, um, terms for another term. Um, and so the recommendation would be that the council approve, uh, our recommendation for the renewal of those members for another term. We also had a member resign, Eric Shellstead, uh, had to resign, and, um, we had applications open. We received one application from Larry Enderly, and in reviewing his application, he appears to be a good fit. Um, members of the Charter Commission have had conversations with him. He's enthusiastic about being involved, uh, with the city, which is always a good thing. And so I think that he would be a good fit. And so we would also request that the Charter Commission, um, approve a resolution for our recommendation based upon, um, Larry Enderly filling the remainder of Eric Shellstead's term, which is two years remaining on his term.
Thank you, Sarah. Questions?
Question. Um, just a question. Um, how, the people who are on the Charter Commission, Sarah, are they, are they certain amounts from different wards of the city? Like are there, you know, three from a ward here, two from a ward here, or how is that determined? I know that Morehead does that to go when they have, for their Charter Commission appointments. It's so much per ward or different area of the city. Is there anything with Fergus that does that or is this, are we just picking people? I have nothing bad to say about Larry Enderly. I've known him since I was in junior high. So anyway, don't get me wrong with that. I just wanna make sure, how is, how are the people represented too in their different areas? Um, so, that's what Morehead does. So what does Fergus do?
I believe, I don't have the charter in front of me, but my recollection based upon, um, my prior review of the charter is that it's just, um, the requirement is that you have to be a resident of the city of Fergus Falls and you serve at large. There's no specific, um, members from specific wards. It's just, you have to be a member or a resident of the city of Fergus Falls.
I would be very curious to see, you know, where the people are at who are on the Charter Commission, you know, where they're, what wards they're in, where they're at. Um, just wanna make sure that we're kinda even out throughout the city, uh, so it's not heavy on one side. So, you know, I would like to see this, a little more discussion on it or some research on it to find that out before we make any other decisions right now.
Yeah, and I would just put a plug in, I serve on the Charter Commission and the Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm.
And this application period was open for a period of, it was a couple of months, and we had one application. And so, um, you know, just as we sit here, I, I understand your concern, but, um, if we have someone who's enthusiastic and I, you know, willing to serve, uh, I would encourage other people within the city to also get involved, um, because there is a lack of people stepping up in both, uh, my experience on the Planning Commission and the Charter Commission.
Maybe it's just a suggestion, but maybe we could ask the Charter Commission to take it up at a meeting to, if they think there would be a benefit to having representation from particular wards as opposed to the way they're doing it now, especially in light of the fact that we don't have, we're not turning people away.
We're not turning people away.
With...
I have, I, I had a question as well. Do we, do you have like an attendance record? I mean, all the people that are obviously on it, um, are they, are they actually turning up?
Yeah, yeah. So our minutes are posted on the city's website, just like the council minutes are. Um, and so typically, we hold just an annual meeting unless there's a reason for us to hold a meeting more regular than that. So something special comes up, um, such as a vacancy or something to that effect where we need to discuss it. So, um, but our minutes are there and the attendance is noted within the minutes.
Right, thank you.
And I have one comment. I mean, the attendance in all of your meeting minutes are reported directly to the chief judge of the 7th Judicial District who provides the ultimate oversight of the Charter Commission. So, and, and the judge looks at that, we, the judge looks at whether the, if, if a Charter Commission member is excused from a meeting or not. So there's that additional oversight, um, relating to how the Charter, uh, Commission functions. But ultimately, it's the judge that has the final say on this matter.
And ultimately, just to piggyback on what Ralph said, the judge has the ultimate decision on who to affirm for terms. Um, so the petition, the city puts together a petition and files that with the court, the court... The court is the ultimate decider of who is appointed to our Charter Commission.
Thanks, Sarah. So we would be looking for a resolution approving that petition of membership for Larry Enderly? Jim?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Greenmeyer?
No.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is approved. Next resolution for consideration is approval of an amendment to the TIF District 4-14 Development Agreement. We'll call on our City Finance Director, Bill Sonmore. Good evening, Bill.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. Before you tonight, we have an amendment to the city's Tax Increment District 4-14. This is the district that's up by the Regional Treatment Center. It's that newer housing development that's been going on. The original TIF district called for 36 owner-occupied units and 10 rental townhomes. That's what's in the development agreement. Now, one of the developers has decided it's better if he owns four of those units, so two sets of twin homes, under a trust. So what that means is that trust doesn't qualify to be in a, be an owner of the parcel within the Tax Increment District. So then what do you do? You can remove it from the Tax Increment District. How does that affect the city? It really doesn't because the city issued bonds to put in all the infrastructure. That's the streets, the water, the sewer, the stormwater. So we put that in. We're using the tax increment to pay the bonds. Okay, if there is a lack of tax increment for some reason, then there are special assessments levied on each parcel, and then the owner of that parcel needs to pay the special assessments. So in this case, you remove those parcels from that. Then the city will just annually build the special assessments, and that owner then will need to pay those specials and is well aware of that. So the city is made whole either way. The assessments, you know, that's even more of a guarantee than, than the assessments. We have those pledges that backdrop. So it's kind of a formality here to, just to clean that up and pull those four out. And that's what we're requesting you tonight. So amend it, remove those, and then amend the development agreement accordingly.
Thank you, Bill. And we can do that through a resolution? Someone like to offer that?
I'll second.
Anthony, Scott, thank you. Questions for our Finance Director? Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Greenmeyer?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Hicks? Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you, Bill.
Yep, thank you.
Under presentation of claims tonight, we have bills in the amount of $2,033,365.97. If there's any questions, we will direct them to our Finance Director.
I'll offer the resolution to pay the bills.
Thank you. Jim?
Second.
Thank you. Tom? Roll call, please.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tommy?
Yes.
Rupert?
Yes.
Greenmeyer?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yep.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Under old and unfinished business, there's three items this evening. The first is an update on the cleanup of 801 West Stanton Avenue, and we will call on our city engineer, Brian Evaro.
Yes, just an informational update in regards to 801 West Stanton Avenue. I believe the seller has achieved substantial completion. The three primary structures have been removed along with the foundations. Most of the debris and personal belongings have been also removed. There is some remaining work, of course. It consists of scattered debris removal, surfacing removal, and stabilization of flats of the site. I have an immaterial image of the site right there of 801. I kind of hatched out a little bit in the red illustrating, there's three structures plus some concrete surface in between the two structures on the middle and west. That has all been removed at this time and everything. McCoy Environmental was on site. They did do some soil sampling. I do not have the final report, but based on discussions with McCoy, they're indicating that negative soil contamination for the site, which is good to know. From the budget, we've made six progress payments issued to the seller. There's a, of the half a million, 55,000 remains to be paid to the seller. That's contingent on completing all these substantial, these punchless items, such as I noted there, the removals, all the remaining debris, and stabilizing at site. So at this time, open up to any questions you have.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone have any questions?
I haven't been down. There is all that concrete out of there?
100%. I, I just wanted to note from it, there's an access off of Stanton Avenue. If it, all right with the council, I'm proposing that we leave that in place, plus a little bit of the two minutes paid landing area. I think that's pretty conducive for redevelopment of the site. What's going to be removed, I think it might be in our best interest to keep that as there as well, so.
Thanks, Brian. Any other? Questions? Okay. Yeah, Scott.
I know that there was vehicles that would cross the railroad in there, but was there ever any official crossing that was approved by the railroad in that area or not?
Within the site, the closest crossing I can, permanent crossing is on View Street, just to the east of the site, which is...
Right. I thought, well, I guess I'd seen vehicles cross right where these buildings were. So I thought perhaps there had been one there that just was not maintained well.
Nothing that's...
Nothing that was official, nothing that was supposed to be there?
No, I'm not aware of that, no.
I was just looking for some potential negotiating options as we look to get into the dairy property. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of a resolution authorizing entering into a purchase agreement for the Westridge Mall, and we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremse.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members. Complicated issue here maybe, so I'll share some background information and lay it out, and hopefully we can have a good discussion. But as you all know, the Westridge Mall was built in 1978, has been a part of our community for a long time. But over the last several years, traffic has declined out there. Thankfully, since 2019, the parcel has been subdivided and replanted multiple times to account for real estate sales to the movie theater, Dunham's, Harbor Freight, and Dollar Tree, ensuring those businesses have remained, which is good. But despite those sales, there are still some issues out on the site. One of those being common space concerns, as some of the buildings share roofs and other common spaces, and also certain utilities that are shared amongst the spaces. Due to recent external factors caused by the current mall owner and the fact that some of those utilities are not separated, there's legitimate concern about the ongoing viability of the four retail businesses that I mentioned previously in this area. To be clear, this concern is not self-inflicted by any of those businesses. This is simply a consequence of the owner of the mall. City staff and other partners have been working closely with those four businesses, and all parties have expressed a desire for local ownership of the mall so we can find a long-term, permanent solution in this area. To that end, we have been in discussions for the last several months with the current ownership of Westridge Mall, talking about what it would take to put a deal together. And in your packet this evening, council is a proposed purchase agreement to achieve that goal. I just want to note, the purchase agreement before you covers the entire mall parcel, but it does not include the outlot that is owned by the Westridge Mall Ownership Group. So it would be all of the parcels, I think there's two or three total, that's owned by the Ownership Group, but not the outlet, outlot parcel that fronts on Lincoln. The proposed purchase agreement that you see in your packet is $419,000, which is the amount that the current owner owes on the mortgage for the property. In discussions with him several times, there, there was no way he was going to entertain a sale or a transaction that was less than that amount, as that's what he owes, to be very transparent on the mortgage on the property. The agreement before you contemplates a due diligence date of December 6, meaning we have until that time to do our due diligence and find our comfort level, and then a contemplated closing date of December 31, 2024, the end of this year. I will say, if you've reviewed the purchase agreement, it's very favorable to the city in the sense that there are many contingencies involved and many outs in the agreement, meaning there's very little risk to the city if the deal doesn't come together to our exact liking. So that was important to us as we negotiated through this. I do want to note three notable contingencies, and I will say, all of these contingencies will have to come back to this council before closing. So if we approve this this evening, there are multiple steps that have to come back before you at future dates. One is that we are able to successfully and satisfactorily provide assumption agreements with all of the creditors on the property. There's a few different things, real estate taxes, utility bills, legal fees, et cetera, that are owed by the owner of the mall. And what the city is going to attempt to do if we are asked to move forward with this is negotiate deals with these local entities that could potentially involve writing these debts off or finding ways to potentially repay them in the future, contingent upon development. Number two, contingent on a successful award of grant money to the county and city through the Department of Employment and Economic Development, Community Energy Transition Fund in the amount of $1 million, which would be used to cover this acquisition cost and demolition, or a lesser amount deemed acceptable by the city and county. The application would be for $1 million. If we don't get $1 million, we have the ability, again, to cancel this purchase agreement, but we also retain the ability to say, if we were awarded less than that and that was acceptable and that covered our costs, that, that we would fulfill that contingency. And then finally, an assignment to Otter Tail County, who ultimately would own the mall and oversee the project going forward. I just want to note, the grant application that I just talked about would be a joint application with the county being the lead agency, the city being the supporting agency, as we as a city were previously awarded money through this fund, and it's thought that it would be more competitive if the county were the lead applicant. The rest of the language within the purchase agreement is fairly standard language. A lot of legalese and city attorney can certainly speak to that if you have any questions. But I just want to reiterate before we open it up for discussion that the driving force behind this proposed action is the threatened loss of the four retail businesses, and again, not a self-inflicted problem. The deal we are working on putting together accomplishes the immediate goal of saving these businesses while tapping into non-local funding to get it done. There are a lot of moving parts and several contingencies, as I just mentioned, but this is a starting point tonight, and I feel signals to all parties involved that the city is serious about resolving this and prioritizing those four local businesses.
Thanks, Andrew. And we do have some representation from at least one of those businesses here, and we may hear from them in a little bit. But I've been involved in these conversations as well, in these negotiations. And I just want to, I'll just reiterate five points. I think Andrew touched on most of them. But as someone who's been involved in the conversations, you know, the driver has always been saving those four businesses, right? That's, that's, that's why this started, right? We realized that there were delinquencies on the owner, on behalf of the owner of the mall that were putting those businesses in jeopardy. And we worked very hard with a number of different entities to figure out a way that we could get here tonight to present what I believe is a path forward to make sure that those businesses have long-term success in our community. Second thing, we've been talking about getting local control of that mall for 20 years, as long as I can remember, as long as I've been involved. And the private sector has tried. It's gone to auction twice in the last 12 months, as far as I know. And these conversations started after the unsuccessful auction this past, I think it closed in, the auction ended in May. But anyway, we've talked about getting local ownership for 20 years. This is the opportunity to do it. And to the third point, it's an opportunity to do it with unique state dollars that Fergus Falls and Otter Tail, and Otter Tail County are uniquely eligible for, coal transition dollars, energy transition dollars. These are one-time monies that will not be available. They've just awarded, I believe, $2.5 million recently. Timing is of the essence on this. So it's getting local control. I'm not in support of this being long-term controlled by a governmental entity, but it is using unique one-time monies available to get local control and at some point, transfer that to the private sector. Fourth thing is, I think it presents an opportunity to create partnerships with the county. We're the only county in, we're the only city in the county that does not have access to some of the funding and some of the housing that is, that is being built in communities like Dalton and Battle Lake. So I think that this presents a unique opportunity to build partnerships between the city and the county so that we are moving forward together. And the last, I think, as Andrew mentioned, I just want to reiterate the fact that this, this purchase agreement is entirely in favor of the city as far as being in control of this situation. There is a lot of complexities to come with the assumption agreements. With those assumption agreements, that's an out. If we don't get the funding, that's an out. If we're not able to successfully transfer to the county, we have opportunities to get out of this. The taxpayers of Fergus Falls, if we don't get the state funding, this doesn't move forward. So last thing I'd say is this, I know there's going to be some people saying, we don't want to give the owner of the mall a dime. I'm with you. I don't want to give the owner of the mall a dime. In theory, I agree. We don't live in a perfect world. He owns the mall. If we want to wait and acquire this through tax forfeiture, it's going to take years. And I think the four businesses that are out there are going to be gone in the meantime. So while I agree with those arguments in theory, we're going to win that one on principle and the community is going to lose. We have a unique opportunity to secure local ownership of the mall with state funds, and I hope the council will agree with that. So with that, we would look for a conversation. We would look for a resolution, and then we can open it up for conversation. I'm sure there's people in the audience that would like to talk as well. So would someone like to offer the resolution to enter into that agreement?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Second. Scott? We're going to have a council discussion first, and then we'll open up. I know there's people that would like to talk. So anyone on the council would like to say anything before we open up?
I can start. I, I think, you know, for me, I would like to see that purchase agreement with the county. I, I understand it's kind of going to be back-to-back, but, you know, and I, because I think it would be kind of good to see what we're, what we're getting into. And also, I asked the question...
Can I address that one? Just that one off the bat?
Sure.
So, so the purchase agreement just transfers, the exact purchase agreement that we have in front of us tonight, it just is a transfer to the county. There's not a separate agreement with the county. It just simply transfers that purchase agreement to the county. Is that correct, Ralph?
Yeah, they would just step in our shoes.
So I didn't understand your question earlier, but yeah. So they would just, that's just, they'd transfer that. And if at any point we don't want to transfer, or they don't want to transfer, then we'll walk away from the agreement. But there's not a separate agreement?
I'll have to probably get with Ralph to find where that actually is. But, and then I think, you know, the other question is like, why don't we let it go to Chapter 11 of filed bankruptcy? Because, you know, my, my kind of heartburn comes from, you know, that we're, we're kind of, you know, the biggest heartburn I have is that, you know, Exhibit C, where we're assuming obviously the debts of, of, you know, the mall. And, you know, under 14D, it says Exhibit C will change between the effective date, which would be the date of this contract being approved, and the closing date. And obviously, Marty has proven that he has no intention of paying the bills. So that, that dollar amount will get greater because if we're going to assume the debt, why would you pay that? So I think, I, I would, I would like to see us limit what that number will be as opposed to it being the full amount. And then I, I didn't read, I just like kind of clarification because it says, you know, obviously we're taking on board his liabilities. Obviously, we're looking at the environmental. But under the Community Energy Transition Fund, which is GA to whatever, 116J, it says the transition fund in the amount of $1 million or a lesser grant amount that may be approved by buyer, at buyer's sole discretion. That means, I read that as if we get awarded $500,000 and he says, I will take that.
It's not him. It's not him.
By, but how do we, what happens on, if we do get $500,000?
Then we could...
Then we walk away?
You make a decision whether that's acceptable or not.
Right.
And you can say, it's not acceptable, so we are going to move on and we're going to cancel the purchase agreement.
Then the other one was like, obviously, it's $419,000. Have we got any value on the building to know whether it is worth $419,000? If we're talking about demolishing it? It just seems that like, that's a lot to pay for a building we're going to demolish, but... but, and then, obviously, there's going to be a condemnation, but I think the other piece was that we are buying it as-is with all faults, so whatever there is, you know, that becomes our problem. And I'm just concerned about that, you know, we find something in that building that we don't need. Obviously, there's a Phase 1 environmental assessment, that, the buyer will pay 100% of that, do we know how much that's going to cost, and how much are we going to have sank into this, you know, when we do that? And then, obviously, if we were on the Phase 2, we've got to pay for that. And then, the assumed real property expense identified in C, including current invoices, that's, I just question that amount of money, again, that we're going to end up with. Then, I got down to, under conditions precedent, it lists obligation of the buyer, but I didn't know, I didn't see in this where, where there was anything kind of restated about if we don't get the grant money, ultimately.
I don't think you're reading it correctly, Andrew. I mean, the condition precedent to closing by buyer, if you look under J, that says right there.
Yeah, so, we reiterated all the other ones, that was all, so I just wondered why we reiterated some...
It just refers back to what is, what are the conditions precedent to closing under Section 1.16.
Right, and then, how much earnest money are we talking about? Because that, it mentions the price, and that may have been somewhere, I didn't see it, but, I was kind of, you know, interested in, obviously, that. The other piece was, obviously, there's a piece about broker's commission, which, obviously, he's going to pay his own broker, but I just wondered, it did go supposedly to, like, a final auction? Are we legally clear that if we buy it in a private sale, that buyer that was in the auction, that, you know, comes back on somebody?
Well, again, we're assuming this without any further obligations or encumbrances by the seller.
Yeah.
So, I would envision that that type of encumbrance, if there is such a thing, would be something that we would have an actionable against the seller, if someone came around and asserted any type of claim after the fact.
And then, basically, obviously, I wasn't sure about, the one on, if there was a legal action brought, then it says that technically, you know, I think either could claim off each other, and I kind of think that if there is a legal action, we should be kind of, like, be on our own. But I think, you know, the hard sell is assuming the debts, because we've had other businesses in town that have unfortunately failed, and we've never assumed their debts. So, are we setting a precedence in terms of, like, if somebody else says, well, I'm going to go out of business unless the city steps in and helps us? And we say, well, we can't, because there isn't a fund at state level that can do that, but, you know, is it the right thing for us to do? And if we demo the building, you know, are we getting prices for separation of the fire, water, sewer, electric, because that's obviously going to be an expense for us to kind of do that? And then, I think, lastly, and I'll shut up, is that I think we should, we should throw the Napa building in, because I suspect that he's behind on property tax on that, and we'll never get property tax out of him. I mean, the only time he ever brings his property tax up to current is anytime that he's wanted, obviously, some sort of segregation. And I think we are somewhat in a driver's seat, and I think if we go back to him with some requests like that, I don't know what that building's worth to him, it's not worth anything, I wouldn't have thought, I would have thought to get rid of the headache would have been beneficial to him.
I appreciate your comments, Andrew. One comment on the Napa building, Napa buildings, is that what you call it?
Yeah.
So, if we, you know, he's clear that's not involved in this, and I don't want to give away too many of the negotiation, but if you're talking about tax forfeiture, tax forfeiture on the mall, in my opinion, timing of that puts, that process takes time. That puts those four businesses that are currently operating in jeopardy, right? However, Napa, if he's delinquent on that, I mean, there's no reason that we can't start that process, and I don't know if he's watching, I'm not trying to give him negotiating tactics, but we can save those four businesses with this agreement here. I think if we try to go back and get the Napa building, it's not going to happen under this agreement, and meanwhile, state grants, yeah, those dollars are going away, so, and that's my thought on the Napa, because we've talked, we've had conversations with him about that, and anything you'd add?
Yeah, I had, just real quickly, I'm under the impression that he has a separate mortgage on that property, and I'm also confident that he feels like the value in that property exceeds the value in the property that we're purchasing, and the number that he's attached to that is reflective of that, so he's not willing to negotiate with that property, as he feels that's, he needs that property to satisfy the mortgage he has on that property.
I suppose then, one follow-up question, I mean, when does the county go down the road of tax forfeiture? I mean, at what point, how much money do you have to own, or is it time, or, I mean, why haven't we taken those sort of actions?
Yeah, Your Honor, Councilmember Hicks, you know, we've had some of those conversations as part of our due diligence, and it's time, it's not money, and the earliest it could happen in this case would be 2027, is what my understanding is from visiting with the county, and frankly, we don't have till 2027 to resolve this without my, knowing all the details, my true concern of losing at least some, if not all, of these businesses.
Thanks, Andrew. Other comments, questions?
So, for me, I just, I think it's unfortunate that we didn't have a committee of the whole meeting, so that we could really kind of discuss this. But you had mentioned that with us joining with the county, it's going to be opening up some, open up some funding and some housing opportunities, and I would like to know what that looks like. And I would also like to know, tonight's the first time that I've heard demolish the building, previously, it was kind of up in the air, so I feel like I'm missing information.
Thanks, Laura. I could just add that I think stabilizing the businesses that exist, that's, you know, whether it's demolition, I think the one thing that has been considered, if there's excess of the $419,000, has been for potential demolition, whatever that will go towards, but I think that, you know, there is walls that would need to be stabilized, and separations from the existing businesses that would need to take place, so I'd say stabilization, but I think that, quite honestly, could be to the county if that agreement came, because I think the intention is to transfer the property to the county, soon as we're able to do that, and that would be a separate agreement, that would be a separate consideration for the council, if we got the million dollars from the state, and if they feel comfortable that the assumptions agreements were met, then they could have the conversation about entering into an agreement with the county, which I think then takes, goes to your question about agreements with the CDA, and what that means, and what are the opportunities in the other communities in the county that are taking advantage of that project. So, again, tonight, consideration is to approve the purchase agreement, which allows the submission of the grant, which then will come back, you know, there's a number, as Andrew mentioned, there's a number of phases where this comes back to the council for consideration, one of them would be your point about the partnership with the county, the other one would be the accepting of the deed award, assuming that we get the million, or if we get something short of that, and then the third would be the assumption agreements, which are complex, and it's going to take, you know, it's going to take a lot of work, actually, quite honestly, to get those done. So, tonight, this purchase agreement allows us to show those four businesses that we're doing everything we can to secure state funding, to stabilize them, and make sure that they remain in our community.
Al?
Mr. Mayor?
One second, Al, you can go next.
Yeah, I just want to say, it's going to be a county decision as to whether or not the building is demolished, and the reason I'm using that as the language is because I saw a draft that the county's working on related to this grant, and the budget accounted for acquisition and demolition, so ultimately, that's their decision, not the city council's decision. The other reason I think that somebody jumps to that conclusion is, one, the condition of the building, and, two, there's numbers readily available from the owner of the mall who's recently had two contractors give demolition estimates, and so when you're filling out a grant like this and have to fill out the budget, having those numbers creates a compelling case, as opposed to having to launch into a whole process now of trying to figure out, and frankly, I don't think you could, without extensive work, figure out what the cost of, you know, building physical exterior walls and keeping all those common spaces, so I don't think the decision's been made, I'm speaking as if it's demolition, because that's what the grant application looked like when I saw it. But ultimately, the county has to make that decision, because they're going to be the owners, if this goes forward.
Al?
I think, back when we had our meeting on September 16th, it was a very intriguing idea. Nobody wants to see businesses leave Fergus Falls, none of us do. These businesses that are out there, they're in business because they know what they're doing, some unfortunate circumstances. As time went on, and we haven't had a lot of time to talk about this, September 16th was our closed session meeting, and I've done a little looking and thinking and research on this, and could you help me understand how it came being that the mall was basically on the chopping block, that it was, couldn't be sold, or the deal was going down, or, you know, how was that initiated? I don't know.
So, there's been two private auctions, I think someone in the audience might know, but I know the one ended in May, so...
So, it's gone to auction twice within the last year, is that, someone correct me if I'm incorrect, but it's twice, twice in the last 18 months?
And then, was he, was he seeked out the owner of the mall then, from the city, or how was that?
So, you know, I'll share as much as I can without divulging maybe confidential information from another entity, but there's a utility company that, well, you can see here on this public agreement, Otter Tail Power Company's owed $192,000.
Right.
They've carried debt on this property for a long period of time, because they knew if they shut the power off, it would impact those four businesses. Right now, the fire suppression system is interconnected for all those businesses, they cannot operate without it, so if the power goes down, those businesses are going to be forced to shut down. Everybody, including the city, was given fair notice that there was a point in time in which Otter Tail Power can't carry that debt any further, right? They're a regulated entity, and then it said, you know, this is a heads-up, this is coming, how are we going to respond to that? So, that's what started the conversation, it led to several conversations with the businesses out there, to Otter Tail Power, to the ownership, who I've been in contact with for many years, periodically, to check in and say, hey, pay the city, pay your taxes, you know, all these different things. And to make a long story short, the threat of those businesses shutting down was very real and imminent, and there's a temporary solution for now, which I don't think I can divulge, that does not involve the city, but the threat doesn't go away. It's very unlikely Otter Tail Power Company is going to get paid the amount of money they need to keep the power on.
How, when did that come to light, or when did, you know, when did they come to the city and mention this? Have a date on that?
You know, we've been in contact...
Just a rough guess.
You know, it's, we've communicated over time. When it became real was probably six months ago, but maybe Ron can, he's got all the details.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Ron Spangler from Otter Tail Power Company. Appreciate the conversation tonight, and I, due to customer data privacy, there's not a tremendous amount that I can share, but I'm hopeful that I can give you some, at least some glimmer of details here. So, what Mr., or Andrew Bremseth was saying about the separation of city services, we began that conversation with the city almost a year ago now, on coming up with a solution to helping these businesses to continue to operate within the city, and we needed to come up with some form of action that we could come up with. And we did not want to take any action during winter months, because you end up having a significant amount of damage to that facility if the water and fire suppression system was not active. I personally have been in conversation with the owner of the mall for several months, and the dollar amount that's there is not as great as it would have been had we not come to understanding in terms of payment. So, that number, we've done what we can to help save these businesses, to let them continue to operate within the city. If you look at Otter Tail's values, one of the things that we have is community, so the businesses, the people that live in this community, and the community as a whole, is very important to us as an organization, and we know that anything that we would have done has an impact on not only the business themselves, but people that work there, people that shop there, and we wanted to, that was very important to us, that we need to come up with some kind of form to get this as a solution. So, we've been willing to carry this for quite some time, and we're hopeful that we can come to a resolution on what's the path forward to a longer-term solution to this situation. I hope that helps.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
With the owner of the mall, you said that, I believe you said you had spoke to him and different things, what was, I mean, $192,000, I would think a company like Otter Tail would, you know, there'd be some, try to collect that bill, I mean, what was, I just don't understand how it got away that much. I know you're being nice to the businesses, but, you know, you're a business too, so, and I understand that.
Yep, and I think that's a reasonable question, unfortunately, I can't get into the specifics on those customer details.
Okay.
I can say that we still ended up in the situation where we actively worked with him on payment, and that dollar amount would have been greater than what it is today.
Because with all the other ones, it's adding up, just what's on our packet here It's a lot of money that the guy owes, and, you know, I was in agreement with the mayor that, you know, we've got to try to do something. Since then, I've been doing some researching, and I've got some more information, too, to give the rest of the council and the audience here, but as far as Otter Tail, I don't have any more questions for you, thank you. As I mentioned, I don't know how the process really worked, but I remember when that mall was built, our neighbor worked for Sobe Construction, and before it was finished, I was driving down in a Dodge Power Wagon with him and his son, my age, in the middle of that mall. It was a great expectation for Fergus Falls, and when that opened, it was full. I remember it like it was yesterday, Mother's Records, I remember that, you guys. So, with that being said, I have fondness for that, I want to see it succeed, I want to see it run properly. But what I think troubled me was, is the timing, it seems so rushed right now, we're getting to the end of the year, it seems rushed, and I guess maybe one thing I could ask for Ron there was, does, I don't, does the cold weather rule basically apply to a commercial property or not?
No, that's just on residence.
Okay, that was a question that I had, and that was October 1st, anyway, for residents, right? Okay, because that was talked about, too. But I do know this, after this kind of got started, and after our meeting that we had on the 16th, just this last Friday, I went out to the mall, and I called Mr. Stahl, who was the maintenance person out at the mall, and we met in the back parking lot, because it came to my attention that there was a council member who went to the mall August 13th, and I asked what date that was, and Mr. Stahl had said, well, it was the 13th, because I didn't want to meet on my birthday, which is the 14th, so he knows it's the 13th, and that was of August. Our meeting was September 16th, a month and three days after that. The person wanted a tour... meeting was September 16th, a month and three days after that. The person wanted a tour, and a comment was made, the mall is being sold, and it's pretty much a done deal. And then that council member asked what Mr. Stahl's wages were. He was wondering if his job was in jeopardy or what's going on. So this was Friday, then, now the 18th. That's what I asked him. If he knew who was purchasing the mall, and he stated Otter Tail County or Port Authority or something like that. This interaction was done, as I said, was one month and three days prior to this Fergus Falls City Council closed meeting on this matter. Just, I don't understand how this works. I still remember going to our orientation as a council member and speaking with the city attorney, Rolf Nicomo. He says, we have to work as a group. We have to work together. One council person cannot do things. We have to be it together. And that was almost two years ago that was told to me. I think regarding the only other person, the first people that I know who knew about this on September 16th was myself and Councilmember Hicks. I'm assuming, assuming, Councilperson Laura Jobe knew about it a little bit prior, just due to the tax levy committee. So I'm not, that's, it was just in circumstance there. I'm curious, how many other council members knew about this? I will say Laura acted in a professional manner. Nothing was said, nothing was done. She didn't investigate anything that I've seen. So I'm curious, was there any other council members who knew this before the 16th of September?
Your Honor, we had two closed sessions about this. And I would maybe look back at the dates before you try to play the gotcha that you're playing. And then, quite frankly, in that closed session, I mentioned that the mayor and councilmember Rachel's were involved. And I said, he was logical because he's also the liaison or a board member of Greater Fergus Falls, and this is an economic development conversation. That's why he was involved. And we made that clear to the council at that first closed session.
I don't think the first closed session was before the 13th of August. I'm just curious on how, I don't, that's why I asked, what is the process? Does somebody go out and ask, does somebody, you know?
I think that, just, you know, I don't know where we're going with this, but just to make, I think the point that Andrew's making is, whatever that meeting was, we could check, get this on record, but it was pointed out who was involved, and that's why, I mean-
Let me-
Councilmember Rachel's, we were very clear about that to the council. And I'm not, I mean, that's just the way-
Well, and here we're clouding, Your Honor, we're clouding the issue of these four businesses with personalities again.
No, I think, I think what I'm trying to do, Andrew, is, I think we're trying to make a really quick decision in a very short amount of time.
Yeah, I'll speak to that too.
Because it's involving the county.
Let me address a little bit.
No, no, that's not at all what it is. So the timeline behind this, which I've emailed to the council and was very clear in closed session, was that the original notice from Otter Tail Power was for October 1st. That was driving that timeline. When there was a temporary solution in place, I sent an email out to the council that said, we're covered temporarily. I stated to all of you why and how that happened. I said, but this is confidential information. Then I sent another email to the council explaining why this was not on the last agenda, because some of the parties that are key to this conversation were not available. The driving factor remains this grant opportunity. The way this grant opportunity exists is it's a rolling deadline. So they are accepting applications for this grant program until the money is gone. So we can gamble and say, let's take this up in March of next year and hope that the temporary solution's still in place and hope there's still grant dollars. But there was a major, significant award of monies within the last three weeks out of this pot of money, and the money is dwindling. So the thought process is, if that is how we're going to pay for this if we move forward, which is what we're recommending and have identified, we gotta do it because there's nothing stopping one of the other dozen or so counties or cities that are eligible for these funds to put in a submission and get that money, and then it's gone. So that's, that's the driving factor. It doesn't have to be tonight if you don't want to make a decision tonight.
Right. I guess the other thing too is, my question is, does the county, do we need to do it if the, if county can just buy it? You know, they bought the journal building, and it was resold. You know, it seems like the water is getting very cloudy.
In my conversations, Your Honor, with the county is, you know, they're, they're not going to come in and take on a project in our community. They want to be additive and supportive to the work that we're doing. They don't want to step on our toes, given the fact that we have been a party to these conversations with all the businesses. I've had a relationship with business owners and the mall owner for the eight years that I've been here. It was pretty, it was pretty practical that, you know, we get the thing in motion, and then if and when the time is right, we hand it off to the county. And that's, that's all the intent here is, is get this thing in motion, check this box, get the application to deed in. If it's funded, okay, we come back and we move it to the next step. If it's not funded, it's over and done there, unless the council wants to take a different crack at it.
Is there any detriment to the taxpayer if the county is brought in on this deal due to the fact that, you know, now they're in city's business?
Yeah, I can't answer that, Your Honor. I, you know, I'll say this, there's already a general levy of the county that's going to fund the services of the county's economic development. So the city in Fergus Falls taxpayers are already paying taxes that go towards the operation of their economic development arm, and we don't get the benefits of that economic development arm. So, you know, if you want to define that as a detriment, maybe, but I can't answer that. I don't know what the, what the county would do.
Couldn't you just ask, why is that?
I can't answer that. I can't speak for the county.
Nick, did you want to, I think I can answer, but I'll let you if you're here.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Nick Leonard with Otter Tail County. I think the question, I just want to make sure, I think the question is, why can't we participate? Statute requires that by resolution, we have to be, the county and our economic development arm have to be invited by resolution to participate. Since the inception, we've been really clear, we're supportive and additive. Big county, 62 townships, 22 cities. Wherever I go, I always say this is my favorite city. But, and I'm here tonight. I also had a meeting in Purim, but I am glad to be here. No, the reality is, is we have to be added. And, Councilmember Kramer brought up the day of the journal building. That was a, we were in the, that was a remodel. We needed space for a remodel, believe it or not. We looked all over, high and low. Mr. Ackerson and his team stole the one building that we could have leased out there under us. So we bought it, we turned around, resold it, and no impact to the taxpayers. But the reality is, is we, we were invited in this conversation. We want to be supportive to the extent that we can as a county, but it really starts with cities. No project that we participate, Battle Lake, Dalton, Purim, Pelican Rapids, Fergus, you name the city that we're operating in, all of them have passed resolutions saying, yes, we want you to participate in our community, and they lead the projects. We don't come in and say, hey, this is, this is how you should spend your time. That's the prerogative of the city, and we support where we can.
Thanks, Dick.
Your Honor, let me reply to Al about a couple of things about a council member. I was the council member to talk to him. I did not say a word about Fergus Falls or Otter Tail County, because I just came from the meeting the day before with a closed meeting with, with the county, with Nick, and then we talked about it. I said, I'm gonna go see Donnie and talk to him. Donnie's been a friend of mine for 25 years. Never said those words. Did ask him what she was making, because I just wanted to know if, who was going to be able to afford to pay him or whatever's going to happen. But obviously, this is going to get drug out a lot longer than we thought it was. I told him his job is not in jeopardy at the moment, so I don't know where you came up with those things, but that's not true.
That's, that's what he was wondering.
That's not true. I don't think he'd say that.
The other, the other thing too is, he did not say Fergus Falls. He said Port Authority.
Port Authority, whatever, Port Authority. But it wasn't Port Authority, it's Fergus Falls. So that's just it. It's not.
The relevancy of the wage question is, as part of the negotiations with the mall owner, he suggested that the city be on the hook for severance dollars for a certain amount of time for the employee out there who's been a loyal employee for many, many years.
I think that's his only job he's ever had.
That's, that's the purpose behind the question, is if, you know, if we're going to be on the hook for severance dollars, which we ultimately said, no, we're not going to consider that, we would need to know what, what the wage was that we would be considering paying severance on.
The ultimate thing of this conversation is to get this mall put to bed and try to get this done without costing the taxpayer any money, which it's not. If you read the purchase agreement, you read it right, it says that we're not going to be on the hook for any of the post or the pre-bills, I guess. And another one came in today by phone to vote. So that's part of the deal. But we need to move forward with this and start working on the grant or whatever you want to call it, and get this thing done and get going. And then do this little nitpicking if we want at the end. But at the end of the day, we're going to turn over the county. It's going to be the county's deal. And Mr. Leonard wants it. That's a good thing. I'm glad he wants to do it. But there's many, many steps. And I should say he wants to. He's looking at me like he wants to, he wants to hit me. But I'm just saying, this is, this is a bit, this is a step for us. It's a small step, but it's a step we need to start. And as we get down the road, then we can start looking at smaller things that like, that's what's happening. And it's, but we need to get to that point. Because right now, I don't want to see the movie theater. I don't want to see Harbor Freight. I don't want to see the Dollar Store. And I don't want to see Dunham's Close. Because if, if Otter Tail Power says, you're done, I talked to the police or the fire department today, and they said, it will be turned, they'll be out of business. So it's very important to us to save those four businesses, no matter how we talk about it.
Out of all that, I guess I do have one more question for Ron over there.
So I'm just, I'm not, all I want to say is, let's just move forward with this, and let's see how it plays out. Let's give it a chance, instead of sitting here picking on the park.
There's a billion opportunities along the way for the city to get out. I think that is an important point. This is a step in the process that allows us to submit the grant. There are three points that Andrew mentioned along the way, that if those things are not satisfactory to the council, then, then, you know, then we can, we have the control to terminate the agreement in multiple times. I do understand that. You know, the other thing too, as I look at too, is we've had, you know, the Bigwood Events Center, we've just now had the, Archie's revamped that idea because the developer didn't get the funding. We have the dairy property. You know, we've got a lot of stuff that's owned by the cities. RTC, you know, it's a lot of money. And there's these other ones aren't getting developed or taken care of right now. It's another thing on our plate. I, hey, it is a great opportunity. I'm not, I'm not saying that. But, you know, with Ron, I guess the question that I had, one more for you, I guess, that came up. What is a very rough estimate to get that power separated out there? I'm sure you guys talked about it.
So in order to get the electricity separated, the majority of that work would be on the customer side of the meter. We would be involved. Once the meter sockets are set, there may be some primary and service wire that we'd have to do, but we've not made any assessment on the electric cost because that's on the mall side.
Do you, just as, like, if I came to you as a, as a business owner out there, hey, you know, roughly, what do you think it might cost to run that out there for XYZ business? You know, is it $25,000, $50,000, $150,000? You know, we don't hear any, not hearing any numbers like that, or, you know, and because that's going to determine what they can do too, you know, if it's on the customer side of things.
Yeah, and I don't know what the ultimate plan is. If it is demolition, there's definitely some work that Otter Tail would have to reinstall services, maybe move some primary equipment. But we'd have to have those conversations on what that project would look like, and we can come up with those cost estimates. Everything else would be on the, either the county or whoever the ultimate developer is to bring those costs forward.
Thanks, Ron.
You know, I just would want to make the comment, and I appreciate the discussion. I really do. You mentioned a couple of properties, Councilmember Kramer, and I would just say this, you know, the dairy, city has next to nothing, if not, if not nothing into, depending on the redevelopment and depending on the structure of the loan repayment based on the ultimate development. You know, that's a, that's a, that's a property that sat not only dilapidated but contaminated for a generation. And we did it with zero liability to the taxpayers, and it's sitting over there, ready to be redeveloped, to go contribute to the taxpayers, okay? Second one is 801 Stanton. And we're going to have $300,000 into that property. We had a contract for $300,000 from the developer. There was an appraisal on that property for six, for more than $600,000 in the dilapidated state it is. We're going to end up with half that into it. We're going to be able to recoup the value, clean up the site, and provide, you know, a benefit to the community. So there's a million reasons why we can, we can think about what if and fear and all that. That's not going to do anything for these businesses. We have an opportunity tonight to enter into a purchase agreement that puts the city taxpayers at no risk, that does everything we can to save those four businesses, and gives the city complete opportunity to do that with state, one-time state funding that will not be available forever. So if we're not willing to do that, I understand. Well, there's, at some point, we're going to take the vote. But I just want to make it clear that we have an opportunity tonight to signal to those four businesses that we're doing everything we can. And there's no guarantee in the end. There's a lot of complexities with the assumption agreements especially. But tonight, that's not on the table. Tonight on the table is to allow us to enter into that agreement, which allows us to submit a grant to come back to the council for consideration of entering into the conversation. There's plenty more conversations to come. But tonight, I think, to me, I think, to me, it couldn't be more clear. But I want to open it up to the audience too, before we take a, take a walk.
My name is Tony Tillmans. I'm from Sartell, Minnesota, and I'm one of the owners of the movie theater. So first off, just want to express our appreciation for the city trying to be engaged in dealing with the mall owner. So if we do nothing, the mall will continue to deteriorate, and it, and, you know, we'll probably close. And the business, I mean, we just, we can't accept the responsibilities of the mall. But I want people to know, we are paying our bills. So when they say, I mean, we have an electric meter, you know, we pay Otter Tail Power every month for a number of meters. So it's, it's more the mall stuff that's not getting taken care of. It's not. And so then, when they talk about separating, it's that we have a fire suppression system that goes throughout the whole mall. So you can't, so there needs to be a minimum amount of heat in the building. We've talked about, you know, temporary solutions. Basically, those temporary solutions are us agreeing to take on Marty's responsibility for a while. So to keep in the hopes that this agreement goes through. Because, I mean, if we look at this and there's no, like, somebody stepping in and saying, we're going to do something to try to, to develop that property, and maybe some of it needs to be torn down. But as owners out there, you can't keep throwing money, you know, like, putting money in with, there's never, if there's not going to be like a solution. So this, there's a lot of risk in this, as far as the city not going forward with it. I don't see the risk for the city. I see the, that the city is likely, or possibly, as they get into this, saying, we didn't get the $1 million. We're not doing it. So right now, we've tried to put some things in place to say, let's try and see this through the end, to see if this happens. Because we've, Marty's been trying to sell this. It's not been two years at auction. Marty's been trying to sell this for a long time. You know, we are in a number of communities, malls in these sized towns are, are really in tough shape. And unless somebody envisions a redevelopment of them, to make them something different, that the Herberters buildings become something different, they, they're just going to, nothing's going to happen. So, you know, we appreciate the, the being in the city here. We appreciate, you know, the opportunity to try to serve the customers here. We're not going, you know, we aren't going to be in a position to take on the responsibilities of the mall. And so, you know, I ask that, you know, we don't look at this and say, oh, boy, the city is, this is a done deal, you know? And when you talk about rumors going around, Don, Don's a great guy out there. He's employed by Marty. It's the one bill he pays. Okay, he takes money, Ron, I think. I don't think he'd be there if he wasn't getting paid. So it's the opportunity though, for, to see if something can happen. There's $1 million out there that the county may step in and do. And, because no private developers got access to that money. So appreciate you looking into this. That's what I got.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. We appreciate you being in our community.
You mentioned that you were the owner, but I didn't hear which business.
What's that?
The movie theater. You mentioned that you were the owner, but I-
You mentioned that you were the owner, but I didn't hear which business.
Westridge.
Okay.
Movie Theater.
I'm the vice president of CC.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
How long have we had, had the theater out there?
We bought it. So we took over, it was a pretty tough-looking building, probably 12 years ago. We took it on, and it was a lease. Right, you know, we bought our real estate, looking, we like to own our buildings. We own, we have like 19 locations. We own almost all of them. So it seemed to make sense. Let's, why give, you know, why pay rent? You know, we'll buy the building. We entered into that agreement right prior to COVID. Closed on it on February of 2020, and COVID hit. You know, if that, if we hadn't owned it, and we were leasing it, we probably wouldn't be there. So. But we own it. We aren't going to walk away from it. We don't, unless we have to. So, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Yeah, go ahead, Anthony can go.
Dwayne Cookman, Mayor, councilpeople. I'd like to know what the ultimate true cost of that would be per. And there's a number of buildings, and what would be the alternative, you know, that are empty in this town? I mean, can you move some of them? I mean, I guess I look at, what are all the options? You got empty buildings? I mean, what would it cost to make a new theater? You know, taking that million dollars, you know, you put 200, I don't know, 200, $300,000 towards a new theater? Because when you go in there, no, it must be. But what a new, what would a new theater do for this area?
No, for the new theater cost?
No, for the people, no, for the, for the people here coming to a new theater. I mean, that's a gemstone.
No, what I'm seeing is you have TIPS. You take some of the state money, and you
look at alternatives.
That state money wouldn't be eligible to build a new movie theater, Mr. Cookman. But, yeah.
I think the creativity needs to be stepped up a notch. What are all of our options? Because it really disappoints me when the 801, it's, we got to move fast. And all of a sudden, it kind of washed away, and now we're hanging. Yes, their state money. But it's just out of our different pocket. It's still the taxpayer. At nine, was it 950,000? It's 650,000 from the state? That's just out of a different pocket from us.
Yeah. And I'm glad that that money came into our community, cleaning up a blighted site that's been a drain on this community for two decades. So, yeah. If they're going to spend that money, I'm glad they spent it right here and cleaned up a blighted site. So, thank you, Mr. Cookman. Anyone else from the audience like to address the crowd, or address the issue?
Mark Leighton, I agree with councilperson Jobe. You had an opportunity to have a meeting of the whole last Wednesday, and this could have been brought up to the public and the council, and discussed in more detail. I've been a criticism of the council being T-boned like this many times. I'm going to try to use my words very carefully, so I'm not shot at for any misrepresentation. What is the total cost going to be? We say it's, what, 149,000, or 419,000? How much is the real estate taxes? How much is utility? Is it I also agree that it shouldn't be, we got to do it now. We have a new council coming in, in January. The closing should be in January, January 20th. I understand the property's been attempted to be sold many times. I did not bid on the building. But had I gone to an absolute auction and bid on that building and didn't get that building for my bid, I'd be disturbed. He's had opportunity to sell this property. He's not taking them. And again, he continues to not pay his real estate taxes, and he continues not to pay his utilities. In addition to the actual capital costs, what are the And I believe I heard correctly that Otter Tail County would take this up in 2027. Is that correct? On real estate tax foreclosure? That's not too far away. Now, I appreciate the businesses out there. I think it is important. Based on my history, a new service to a building, I don't know what kind of power they use, but 150 grand on the outside to bring in a new service. I too own the dirt that I have my businesses on. Let's look back, as Mr. Kramer indicated. How's the city managed the Regional Treatment Center? $10 million gone. The convention center has $125,000 carrying cost. The checkers deal was supposed to get done. We got to get it done. I still haven't heard the reason why it didn't get done. Why it wasn't Fergus Falls chosen. And it's the wrong time. This is probably the second worst economy I've lived through. You can look at the city's sales tax receipts over '23 and '24, and it's down about $30 per person in retail sales in Fergus Falls. The budget's up?
No, I think it's only $7,000 down from the year before. So, I mean, I know it's down, but it's only 7,000, I think it is.
And that was an anomaly, that it was down. Because if you compare to that prior year, that one month was a one-time taxpayer that did a, so that, it's an anomaly. But that's all I know. I haven't dug in.
I'm sorry to be.
And let's keep the conversation to the mall, too.
Sorry to be shooting details. Please correct me. I'd like to know what the sales, retail sales are down in Fergus Falls.
Yeah, we'll bring that back to a future meeting. But tonight, we're going to discuss the mall.
The budget's up. Sales tax are down, and it's a bad economy. I believe that the city shouldn't be in the business of buying capital improvements as in the mall.
Thank you, Mr. Leighton. I'm just going to reiterate my point that this has been talked about locally. There has been local interest in the mall. I think there are people that will step forward once it's locally acquired. This has gone to auction private twice. The city's not the first person. And now, we're not going out there looking for government intervention. This is clearly an issue that there's four businesses at stakes that the private sector has not taken, has not been able to take care of. So we are simply utilizing unique funding to try to acquire local ownership, stabilize those businesses, and make sure that they remain in our community. Anyone else with?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Lisa Workman. I'm the president of the Fergus Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. As the advocate for our business community, I want to say thank you for looking at creative solutions and ways you can help save four businesses. It says a lot about the council, if we're going to move forward on this, on how important our business community is. We pay a heavy amount of taxes. We employ lots and lots of people. We help make Fergus Falls a great place to live, a great place to do business. And again, I want to thank you for being creative and looking outside the box on how we can help save and maintain four great businesses in our community. Whether they're chambers or members or not, that doesn't matter to me. But what matters is that you're looking at solutions. So I just want to say thank you for that. These are not easy decisions, but I think there are enough safeguards in the way that will help keep us moving forward. And it speaks volumes, if you do move this forward, on how important you value each and every one of our businesses in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Andrew, do you have a comment?
Well, yeah, Your Honor, I just, I don't need to go backwards necessarily. But I just, you know, I want to say, I think, I don't know how we could be any more transparent than we are tonight. So, you know, I think we've been very transparent with every detail of this transaction, the negotiations, the things that have happened. And to say that we're T-boning the city council after they've seen this in two closed sessions, multiple emails from staff, packet goes out Thursday in advance of a Monday meeting, when it's required to go out by Friday, I think that's gaslighting, frankly. And, come on. Come on, guys, come on.
If we had considered this at a committee of the whole, they'd say, well, why didn't you bring that to the full council? Why didn't you bring that to a council meeting on a Monday night when the newspaper is here? We'd be criticized on that, too. So thank you, Andrew. We're doing as transparent as we could possibly be. Trying to, yeah. Anyone else from the audience want to, want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Jeff Ackerson, I'm the CEO and part owner of Vector Windows here in town. Appreciate everything that's going on. And I'm hearing a lot of things, and I appreciate the history lesson of the mall, going back to your youth days. The part, I know there's issues among the council. We heard about that tonight as well, too. But we're here to deal with an issue of four businesses in town that are employers in this community. Similar, I'm not one of those four. But I will tell you, I hear from every one of you councilmembers about how important the businesses are to this community. Here is an opportunity to use state funding dollars, make sure, and again, from the work of the staff, it sounds like lots of outs out of this purchase agreement. So if the funding doesn't come in, you can walk away from this. If there's parts and pieces that don't fit, you can walk away from this. But this is your opportunity to show us, business owners, is your money where your mouth is. This is not signing anything tonight. This is allowing this to proceed. And I understand the timeframe and how quick this is. But we are at this point in time, and we can argue all about how we got here, what happened. But ultimately, the decision tonight is, do we move this forward, or do we sit and complain about all the things that happened in the past, and it's a great reason for us to say why we're not going to move this forward? I don't know how you have a better purchase agreement. I've bought buildings in this town. One, I guess, is the wrong one. We never had a purchase agreement that was this friendly to the buyer. So I don't know how you're ever going to get it any better than this as well. So that's my comments. But again, I hear a lot of voices. I hope you guys step up and support the businesses in this community, because we're also taxpayers, and we pay a lot of taxes. And I'm with you, I don't want my taxpayers waste, my tax dollars wasted either. This is a good use of tax dollars. This is a good use of making sure we continue to have businesses in this community that feel supported and actually continue to grow in this community. Because some of us have opportunities to move outside of the community at some point. I hope you guys show us why it's important to stay in Fergus Falls tonight with your vote.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Cecily Cookman, resident of Fergus Falls, mayor, councilmembers, and actually, I don't know if it'd be Andrew or who I'd address. I have.
Mr. Brumse.
Prince.
Just joking. Andrew, Andrew is perfectly fine.
Maybe. Thank you. Four questions. Okay, so the amount that we're looking at is 419,000. And within that, my question is, is are we paying the back taxes that he's not, that the owner isn't paying? And then we're also paying the back utilities with that? And then, what is the condition of the building? I know there's been a couple councilmembers that have been in there. Is it actually something that can be salvaged, or is it something that should be actually condemned and taken over by the city? That's, that's my questions.
Do you want to take the assumptions first, explain the assumptions?
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Let me just pull up that page, so I can speak to the exact numbers. So there's the very last page, Exhibit C, which is in the packet, highlights six different expenses or credits, creditors that are against the property. I'll just take number one, Otter Tail Power. We've already brought them up, and they're in the audience. So they're owed $192,107. In this purchase agreement, it says that we have to create or negotiate assumption agreements that we're comfortable with as a city or a county, for this purchase agreement to close. And what I envision that looks like is Otter Tail Power agreeing that they're not going to collect, that they're going to write this off. I've had conversations with five or five out of the six entities. The one I haven't talked to is the smallest one on here. And one of them is the city, about the potential for either writing off those debts, or making them uncollectible until a future date, should development happen, should there be the ability to collect. The preliminary conversations I have had have been very positive from these local entities, acknowledging that they may never collect, and that they're happy to write those off. They're not, they're not happy to write them off, but they're willing to write them off to see the development in Fergus Falls and saving of those businesses. So very community-minded partners on this sheet of paper. And again, those agreements have to be negotiated, and they have to be acceptable to the city council. So if, if one of these parties could say, no, we're not giving you the ability to write this off, and/or, you know, we'll, we'll state, we'll maybe collect it down the road, then this council has the ability to say, timeout, we're not moving forward. We're not comfortable paying $192,000 to Otter Tail Power or what have you. So that's, that's the assumption agreements. We have to negotiate individual agreements with each of these creditors to our satisfaction.
Okay. So what you're telling me is, if we enter into this, we, we are responsible to these creditors, but we're looking forward to hopefully getting some forgiveness?
No, we're not responsible to these creditors in any way, shape, or form until we enter into assumption agreements with these creditors. And again, we would not enter into those agreements unless they're satisfactory to the city. Rolf, I don't, can you see it more clear than that?
No.
Okay.
It's true. I mean, the city's on, is not on the hook unless it chooses to be.
Okay. If somebody says no, then it's a no-go.
Well, we walk away. It's up to the council. But I mean, I envision that there will be a package coming to this council with assumption agreements in it for their consideration to see, look, look how we negotiated some of this debt. Are you satisfied, council? Or are you dissatisfied? If they're satisfied, awesome. If they're dissatisfied, they will say, let's just cut bait here, and let's cancel the purchase agreement.
What, what's the number on the six creditors combined, please? Do you have that?
I, I don't have the total here. 400, 400, 400,000.
So it's another 400,000 on top of the 419?
No, no, it's negotiated.
That, to be negotiated, okay.
Yeah.
It could be zero.
It could be zero.
Could be zero.
And that's up to the council. If they want to accept 400, that'd be their choice. But if they wanted to say, no, we're only going to accept.
We make the final decision. That doesn't have nothing to do with tonight.
Okay.
Nothing to do with tonight.
All right.
As far as the building condition, I, I haven't, we have staff that have been in there. I would have to defer to them as to, you know, the extent of dilapidation and some of those things. I haven't personally been in there, and I don't want to put anybody on the spot tonight. So.
Okay.
We certainly, if, if that's a sticking point for anyone, we can provide more information about that.
Okay. So the condition of the building is unknown at this time, then?
That's not accurate. It's unknown to me. Our staff has, has the condition of the building.
Okay.
I just don't want to speak out of turn, because I haven't been in there.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Cecily. All right. So we have a resolution. We're going to call, but I'm going to allow one last time for anyone in the, in the audience to see two people over here. Mark, you can be, you're next. Then we'll bring it back.
Thanks for letting me address you. Mark Seking, out of Fergus Falls, coming for a couple of different reasons. I looked at that building from a business perspective. We'd sure like to continue to grow in the community. And also, I traveled the state and the nation pretty extensively lately. And so malls are what malls are, right? You get to see a lot of redevelopment of malls in different places. Sometimes they go down and become beautiful new buildings. Sometimes they get reused in different fashions. The, the condition right now probably has more to do with the condition of the owner and the paperwork surrounding that than it does the condition of the mall. Both are in play. Right now, we paid attention to the auctions. It's, it's unwinnable. No private sector person shouldn't and could step up right now to try and take this thing on. I think if you had a trusted entity, a city, a county, and got some paperwork cleaned up, there's a chance that could be redeveloped. To say, is the mall building savable or not savable? Again, that's an economic decision, right? Either some investor or entity decides to invest in it and can pull it together, or it comes down. But what it doesn't do is sit in the dilapidated state it is in right now. So having been through that thing extensively, through the basements, the, the upper break rooms, the ceiling, the interstitial spaces, that will be determined by economics, if we can get this to a trusted entity. So I don't know that we're saying it definitely comes down based on, on what's going on right now. But it definitely moves away from the unfortunate state that it's in, and progress can happen. So on behalf of myself, as a business person, looking to grow in the community, and then what little work that I do with Greater Fergus Falls, we'd love to see this thing brought into a better situation where, where progress can happen. I think you guys have done due diligence. I appreciate the research that was done on the backside. You provided safety and outs, and provided a chance to move forward. So. You provided safety and outs and provided a chance to move forward. So appreciate the council's work on this.
Thank you, Mark. You just, just, SCR solutions, that's your business, just for the people that don't know Mark Sicking. And he's just recently expanded and is looking, already looking to expand again. So appreciate you being in the community, Mark.
Just one thing, Your Honor.
And you too.
Mark does a lot of work for the Greater Fergus Falls. I've been involved with quite a few things with them and don't cut yourself short. You do a good job.
All right.
When I let Mark go, I said I'd wind it up. That's fair enough.
Sounds good to me.
It depends what the definition of wind-up is.
Well, we'll get to a.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Councilman. I'm Lee Rogness. I serve our community in different ways and resident here as well as a county commissioner. I would just like to kind of give a little history. There's only a few of us in this room that can remember the day that mall was, had its ribbon cutting and we seen the glory of that mall. And we also witnessed the downside of it as well. I knew the manager well and seen how the decisions that were made were unfavorable, but also going against the trend of times, it, it probably wasn't as good either. But the point I like to talk about, we've heard about so many dynamics tonight, the hells, the lies and things of that nature. But I like to talk about Marty. We've known Marty by first name for so many years. It's unbelievable. And I don't know how many initiatives, numerous initiatives have been made to try and secure that mall away from Mr. Marty, who is, his first name is Marty. And we always failed. At the very end, he said, you guys have such great ideas. I want to implement them and I want to go with it. Well, we see what we have out there today. So what we have today is what I really would consider to be something that's absolutely unique. I remember sorting my mail on Saturday morning down at the post office at the high, the high tables with my elbows on there, talking to Mayor Ferber. We were talking about the mall then. And I looked out here. He was mayor up until year 2002. So we can kind of get a history. In his last years, he was as an activist. He had been earlier in his term as a mayor. I think it was about 19 years that he was mayor. But we talked about how we should get that mall away from him. And here we are 20 some years later, still trying to get that mall away from him. And now today, we got it for a price. We know what the price is. We're gonna use somebody else's dollars. We were passing the hat around here before when we were trying to buy that mall. And we're not doing that tonight. We're using dollars from, that this community has earned with the energy initiatives in this community. I heard tonight that this is a starting point. It certainly is a starting point. We've been trying to start this for years, but we're at a point where we actually have him having said and put his name to a piece of paper. So we got his part done. Now it's our part and that's when we need to move in. We're saving businesses. We've already talked about that. And we get this back under local control. There is, he has had, Marty by name, has had no interest in the welfare of the Fergus Falls community. If he had, we would have seen something completely different out there. And he, he's, he's not interested in. How many times has he been up here and met with people of this community? Very seldom. You want to talk to him, you call him. And the thing, I think the other thing is here, the C D A, Otter Tail County C D A, we have to separate those. We talk county in general terms, but the C D A is the organization of the county that does economic development. We've have seen that this is one opportunity where we can step in. The city has tried their efforts already and would not have a strong application, but together we probably can have a strong application. And the county wants to see the county seat community thrive. And I've heard this from other communities. They say, we want to see Fergus to be more than it is today because they are our county seat. That's where we go when we go to town. So Fergus Falls has that opportunity. And I would just say, this is the opportunity to meet Marty at his table and get this mall into local ownership. You say, what's the plan for the mall? We have had plans. What's the use of writing another plan for that mall if we're gonna deal with Marty and he's not gonna sell it to us? Today, he's gonna sell it to us. We can buy this thing. We can get it on local management, local ownership. And then we can put a plan together using the community. And I think we've got a great team right here to start with. A lot of good ideas here. So that's my point. Let's get this thing away from Marty.
Thanks, Lee.
So one follow-up question then. So is, is the C D A going to, are we transferring the property to the C D A or to the county? Then?
We're going to the C D A. You explained the process there.
And just to make sure it's not happening tonight.
No, no.
That will come back for the, for the council.
You get to do this all over again. Mr. Mayor, council members, this, the, the grant has to be to a unit of government such as a county or a city. And so we're applying jointly. So the actual transaction, transaction would have to go to the county. The other reason that's important is because as you talk about that assumption, the C D A doesn't have any authority over those, that, that tax abatement or those, that the certain, the tax situation. And so it would go to the city and then it would ultimately go to the C D A who does all of our economic development type work.
So, so then would we have to pass a resolution then to authorize the county slash the C D A then to develop this property?
Mr. Mayor, council members, based on my review of the purchase agreement and our conversations, it sounds like you have several dozen things to achieve, including assumptions agreements. And then at that point, let's say we get a million dollars, you pass all those things. At that point, you as a council can have a conversation about, do we now want to assign this to the county? And that's ultimately, if, if you decide that, hey, guess what? We have the capacity to do this as a city. We would say, great, we'll support you how we can, but then you take the lead on it.
Yes, okay, thanks, thanks.
So, so yeah, so that would be the discussion at that point. So, okay. Thanks for the good discussion. There's a resolution. Enter into a purchase agreement on the Westridge Mall. Roll call, please.
Absolutely. Yes.
Knowing that we have a couple of steps that we have to take place tonight, I will vote yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Kramer?
No.
Rachel?
Yes.
Hicks?
I'm in the same place as Laura. I, I think as we got opportunities down the road to question this again, I would say yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you all. Next item is a resolution authorizing cities to submit a joint application with Otter Tail County to the Energy Transition Fund. I think we've discussed this quite a bit. No, Clara, please, please.
No, I have nothing to add.
This is the applicant. No, I didn't mean to cut you off though, for real. Okay, anyone have any questions? Someone offer the resolution?
A resolution.
Yeah, thank you. Let's see. Yeah, it's a resolution, a second by Jim. Scott and Jim. Roll call.
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved.
I just might have had one thing. Ultimately, this is, this is what we're meant to do. We're meant to discuss things. It shouldn't be a rollover that something just gets passed. So it's a good discussion this evening and nobody got offended.
I think it's a great discussion, actually. I think it had its moments.
I appreciate it.
So there's no new business. There's no miscellaneous announcements that I'm aware of. Lynn, do you have anything for the good of the order? If not, we're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.